I'm going to call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen for August 22nd, 2016 back to order. We started this meeting at 6 o'clock and went immediately into executive session, where we discussed collective bargaining about the conservation, assistant conservation agent position, job description, and a patrolman's union contract. Both of those, we did approve the conservation assistant, assistant conservation position and the patrolman union one-year extension, which we will talk about later in the meeting. As required by open meeting law, we are informing you that we will be video and audio taping as well as broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience that is planning to do audio or videotape must inform the chair now. Okay, will you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, in the civil with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, weekly briefing. Do we have anyone for weekly briefing? John Rendone, Harbor Master.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, John Rendone, Harbor Master. Just a quick update on our Nantucket Marina reconstruction project. I know it's been in the news, so it's probably not a surprise, but just a quick update. We've run into some delays with regards to the required permitting to commence the project as planned this coming October. The delays really related to the dredge material, our plan to dredge the harbor. We pulled samples back in April, did the required chemistry testing on it, and it came back with an elevated level of contaminants. And so, the Army Corps are requesting additional testing on it to determine where we can put the material. That additional biological testing will take anywhere between three to five months. So that's one obstacle. The other obstacle is we're, we're changing the dock layout, our proposed plan, and part of that is putting an extension on the east dock, which goes into the federal navigation area of the harbor. The harbor is essentially a line down the middle. The outer part of the harbor is a federal anchorage area. We've had success in the past putting docks into that area. I don't anticipate that there'll be a real issue with it, but it requires a further review than was, than what was originally told to us when we submitted our, our application back in March. That will require a further four-eight review process that could take up to three months, three to five months as well. So with those two permitting issues still pending, we just don't have enough time to put the project out to bid, select a company to build our docks, and have them in place and ready to go by this coming October. So we're putting it off for another season. As most people know, we got a Seaport grant of a million dollars for that project. I've, I've talked to the Seaport folks, and we're not at risk of losing that grant. We just have to adjust our timeline, so that's good news. I don't anticipate any additional costs from born engineering relating to this delay. The only cost increase potentially could be construction costs, you know? I guess the rule of thumb is 10% kind of thing, so we'll see how that plays out. But as of now, we'll keep pressing hard, trying to get our permits lined up, so we have them in hand to go out for bid in spring, in the early spring, and start construction October of '17.
Great, thank you, John.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else for weekly briefing? Okay, public comment and announcement. The first one we have up is Norm Clark, Fire Chief.
Good evening. It's a pleasure tonight to introduce a new member of the department. We've been very successful in years drawing the best of the best, and we've just added another best to our public safety team. I will, I'll let the deputy chief give a, give a briefing on the new member of the department.
Thank you.
We were thrilled to find out through a friend, former Yarmouth Fire Chief, who's a deacon with St. Pius, introduced us to Father Mark. Mark Tremblay is the, the new pastor at the Holy Trinity Church and comes with a pretty extensive fire service background. His dad did 38 years in Fall River. His uncle was in Fall River when there were still horses in Fall River. So he, he's been a chaplain since 1999. He's a member of the Mass Chaplain Corps. And from, from my little brief interaction with him so far, he, he's a good set of years to, and that is probably the biggest asset he'll bring to the department, is he's there for the membership. He's not there to push religion, as he would say. He's there to just listen and, and be there for us and also support us in any other activities we need. So it's my, our pleasure to introduce Father Mark and, and welcome to the department. And you don't have to say anything.
I don't have to say anything. That's really great. Nothing like being put on the spot.
Well, welcome aboard.
Nice to be in Harwich.
Welcome aboard, we're glad to have you.
Thank you, thank you.
Anyone else for public comment and announcement? Deputy Chief Tom Gagnon.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just a reminder, September 3rd, from 11:00 to 2:00 at the Police Department, the Public Safety Building, we will have our annual Jailhouse Barbecue, and we'd like to invite the entire town to come. Last year, we had close to 1,000 people show up. During the time, you'll be able to dunk a cop in the water tank, free hot dogs, hamburgers, face painting, touch a truck, or we say crawl in a cruiser. And it's just a good time for all, so just encouraging everyone who would like to come down, meet your police officers, feel free to do so.
Right, that's September 3rd.
September 3rd, 11:00 to 2:00 at the Public Safety Complex.
Thank you, Tom. Next up for public and comment and announcement, this is Rob Mador, who works with a program called Bridges for the Fallen. He's also the newest member of our Conservation Commission.
That's right. Thank you for inviting us tonight. I also have with me Jeremy Jengress from Harwich Chamber of Commerce. So we have gotten permission from the state to dedicate the Route 124 overpass on October 8th to fallen Navy pilot Ralph Burns. Skip Burns was his dad, was his son who requested the bridge. And Skip was a huge piece of Harwich, teacher for over 30 years in Science Department, Harwich High School. So Jeremy and I would like to invite everyone on earth to the ceremony on October 8th. Cape Cod Tech has been gracious enough to give us their facility as a staging area for our events, which will include parking and busing to and from Cape Cod Tech to the park and ride over here, just so we can, it's going to be thousands of people, so we're trying to facilitate that process out of Cape Cod Tech. So it starts at 10 o'clock sharp. We have a flyover planned, we have Medal of Honor speakers, we have an amazing slew of entertainment at the bridge, and then people will be bussed back to Cape Cod Tech sometime around 11:30, where we will have food vendors and/or restaurants there to feed the masses. And as part of the $10 parking at, over at Cape Cod Tech, you will also, the people that pay the $10 will get a pass for busing for the entire day, which will bring them to a couple different spots in Harwich, which would be like Red River Beach, downtown, Main Street, other points of interest as they arise. And I'm just going to hand it over to Jeremy, because that's, the rest of the portion from that on would be handled by the Chamber.
Real, real quick, Rob, you had mentioned that you had a motorcycle group.
Yeah, the Patriot Guard will have a huge flagline. Also, Rolling Thunder is having a, going to be one of their national events, so the potential of four, five, 600 bikes there would be, this will be a huge development.
There's potential that Governor Baker may show up to speak.
Governor Baker has been invited, and so far, we have heard back yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
So real quick, October 8th, Saturday, October 8th is Columbus Day weekend, obviously. We've got lots of stuff that we're working on through the bridge ceremony following after that to kind of keep people in Harwich and keep things happening. We've got some bands lined up at the tech school to provide some entertainment. Rob talked about food, so there'll be food, music, games, and lots of activities. The buses, we're working to have buses to take people back and forth to the downtown area. And most recently, we're, we're working now on a nighttime activity where at the tech school, you'd be able to view a professional fireworks show that we're working to coordinate and fund, so that we would have a real dedication ceremony ending with the culmination of, of the return, hopefully, of our town fireworks that would be visible from the tenting area at the tech school with live music, some more entertainment, and all kinds of good stuff. So it's, it's really gearing up to be a really town, hopefully town-wide event that's going to raise money for a new scholarship, the Skip Burns Memorial Scholarship Fund. That would be a great time for everybody, to, to be able to remember the people that helped make this town great.
Thank you both. Anyone else for public comment and announcement? Okay, on to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I make a move that we approve the consent agenda and approve, A, the minutes from July 11th, 2016, regular session, July 25th, 2016, executive session with the corrections that the time started was 6:15, and at the bottom of those minutes that it be corrected to note that it should be 7:25-16 rather than 5:31-16. And B, approve the sales contracts between Specialty Vehicles, Inc. and the Harwich Fire Department for the new emergency medical vehicle, authorize the chair to sign. C, accept monetary gifts to the Council on Aging gift account totaling $930 and $50 to be deposited in the Town Nurse Gift Account. D, approve the reappoint, the reappointment of Dean Hedersted as member of the ZBA. E, confirm the appointments of Rich Larios and Ed McManus as finance committees representatives to the Capital Outlay Committee per the Harwich Home Rule Charter, Chapter 9, Section 5.1. F, confirm the appointment of James Atkinson as the Planning Board's representative to the Community Preservation Committee. G, approve proclamation request from the Cape and Island Suicide Prevention Coalition and a vote to sign. H, approve requests by BA Event Promotions for a one-day entertainment license and a one-day special license for wine and malt on October 2nd, 2016, and to waive townwide facilities use policy for the event. I, approve request by Amazing Grace for a one-day entertainment license for recorded music on September 10th, 2016, rain date is September 11th, 2016, from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. J, approve the recommendation of the town administrator to approve the EverSource petition to install underground conduit to supply service to 52 Pleasant Bay Road. K, approve Caleb Chase Fund request in the amount of 700 to be paid to EverSource. L, approve the Caleb Chase Fund request in the amount of 700 to be paid to EverSource. And M, approve the Caleb Chase Fund request in the amount of 197-96 to be paid to EverSource.
Second. Great, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as read. Any comments on it from the board? I have one comment on H, which is the event promotions for the one-day entertainment license. We just want to make sure that there is a police detail hired for the, for the beer and wine, and we want to make sure that there's an insurance policy in place for the day. Both of those would be stipulations for approval.
I'll convey that to the race director.
Okay. And the, there was one typo in the application. It said Centro in Baldwin Field, it's the Centio in Baldwin Field, so if they could just correct that application. On G, approve proclamation, request of Cape and Island Suicide Prevention Coalition. By approving this, we're officially designating September 5th through 11th, 2016, as Suicide Prevention Week in Harwich. Just wanted to make everyone aware of that, and that is in our packet if they wanted to read that proclamation. That's all. So it's been moved and approved, moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to old business. The first up tonight is Town Beach, which is also referred to as Beach 22. This has been before us a couple times now. Tonight, we're going to discuss the, there was a question asked at the last meeting, which was where people can sit in front of lot number four, which is noted as the Fitzpatrick property. We stated that we would get a legal opinion, which we did. Chris is going to go over that legal opinion, but that is the only part of this that we're going to go over tonight. We will, we will take up the rest. I'll have a recommendation after Chris's report, but we are only talking tonight about the legal explanation that we got as far as who owns the property in front of the house. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the chairman had indicated, I've had a kind of extensive discussion with the town's attorney. He went through several case laws. One of the things I, I think is important to bring out is that there was a, a case that was determined in 2013, so when the board got its original opinion back in 2008, 2009, case law has somewhat changed. In terms of the issue that I had brought up, that was, I was specifically challenged on, it was my understanding, and it still is my understanding, that Mr. Fitzpatrick has what they call a hard property bound. He has a definitive line in which the, the property is, is identified. And Lot 36 and Lot 37, that are town beaches, go from, as of 2000, as of 1924, are town beaches, that those property lines go, and they're specifically in the deeds, that they go from the adjacent bound with, in this case, Mr. Fitzpatrick, along with the other parcels along that road, Beach Road, and they go to Nantucket Sound. So what I had alluded to that night is that because there's a hard property bound, and it doesn't say that it borders Nantucket Sound, that yes, in fact, the town does own property. So during the day, during high, during low tide and mid tide, when the beach is open and available, the beach is open and available. When the, the law is, also is clear, and, and the opinion that the 2009 opinion was rendered on, when land goes totally underwater, at high tide, low tide, mid tide, when it's totally underwater, then you lose your, your legal right to that. So there is an issue of erosion that has occurred, and certainly the public beaches that existed in 1924 are dramatically different than what exists now due to the erosion factors. The, the other question that I asked for the attorney to, to weigh in on is, and I think, I think it was Selectman Hughes that had brought it up, does the town have the ability to go in and re-nourish those beaches? And the opinion came back that under the permit that had been filed previously, the board had said it would not pursue, so he encouraged that we not pursue under that. But we are not prohibited, the board would not be prohibited, from doing beach nourishment in those areas in which nourishment would be allowed. And I, I say that a little bit because we would have to get a permit in, in order to accomplish that. I don't believe that it's really my place in, in terms of where the board has set, if you would, a, a policy that they have not taken a lot of re-nourishment efforts in that area. And if the board wanted to change it, I think it is kind of incumbent that the board would have to ask for administration to see how we would do that process, how we would apply for a, a new Chapter 91, and how in fact would we do re-nourishment. And just in, in terms of that, I've had some very preliminary discussions, and I think that there's really two options that are available. We certainly do have public beaches that when we do dredging in our various harbors, where we do re-nourishment, so we could add this area, once we get the permitting, to do re-nourishment and kind of do it as we go over a longer period of time. If there was something that the board wanted to pursue, if you would, a more aggressive policy and try to re-nourish the beaches in that area, then I think that that would probably necessitate having to do a capital improvement request. And I certainly, if the board wanted that, I could work with the Harbor Master to put some requests together and try to get additional material to try to replenish those beaches. But I think those are really the, the two avenues. One would be a kind of, almost what we normally do is our, part of our common practice, and the other one would be a little bit unusual to take a more aggressive approach, try to re-nourish the beaches in a, in a more timely fashion.
Thank you, Chris. The, the question was asked if, if people could sit in front of the Fitzpatrick's home on Lot 4, and several emails have come into, to the Board of Selectmen Town Administrator's office stating that there is no beach left in front of Lot 4, but there still is a beach left on the right side of the walkway going down. We don't have any definite property lines there at this point, so my suggestion, Chris, would be that the town surveyor look at what's noted as Lot 36, Lot 37, and Lot 38, which are the, which are the beach lots that the town owns in front of maybe a dozen homes there, and establish some sort of property line. If we tell you now that you can go sit in front of the Fitzpatrick's home, it'd be a guess as to where you would be sitting at low tide or mid tide. So that property line is not established yet. We do know that it is the southernmost point of his property, and our southernmost point is Nantucket Sound, so we should give people an idea, now that we're, now that we have a legal opinion, that they can sit there, where exactly they, they can sit. And I think that, that the property line would also be helpful for re-nourishment if we have the conversation on re-nourishment.
Yeah, just, I think, Mr. Chairman, just to add, and I appreciate you bringing that up, I think it's definitive that the map that we do have, that is a few years old, the high tide, there is no more town property at high tide. So anything in front of Mr. Fitzpatrick's property at high tide would be on his property. And I think, as I alluded to before, that would be trespassing, that's private property and shouldn't be on there. And to your, to the second point, I will ask the surveyor to, to see what we can do about where that tide line is and to get a more definitive that we can hopefully give to people as a reference point.
Before I open it up to the rest of the board for comment, our intent would be to get a property line and then bring this back and have a discussion on re-nourishment. Anything from the board? Peter?
Oh, just in preparation for that discussion, because I think, you know, there's definitely interest in re-nourishment. Maybe the town administrator can work with the Harbor Master and just look at his plans going forward. You mentioned, you know, it may take a while, but, you know, when is it a natural occurrence that he would be, have material available from the county dredge, for instance, to be able to pipe it here and re-nourish the area as opposed to doing something special?
Okay.
So we could just have an idea of what his plans are going forward and when this might naturally occur as opposed to making happen, you know, sooner. Obviously, you do it sooner, there's a cost, additional costs involved in doing it, but let's understand what that is, and we could bring that back for a discussion.
Very good. Anything else from the board? Angelo?
I don't know when it's going to be appropriate, whether we should do it now or after we do these other two stages, but we need to look at how much sand it would take, how long that sand would last there, what kind of water rise is doing impacting on it, all those kinds of planning issues. But I'm not sure we should do that now or wait until we see where the lines are. Because all, all the Harbor Master does is dredge a channel, and then we, we as a big group generate or determine where it should go, and there's always some left over, which is normally sold to associations to fix their beaches up. But he, he's the one who gets the sand. I think there are other people who make the judgment as to where it goes.
Chris, do you need anything more than a consensus of the board to go forward with the survey?
Yeah, no, I, I understand what the intent is. Thank you, though.
Great. I will take comment from the public, as long as it's related to the property in front of lot number four only. Hearing none. Next.
This is now our big comment I received from Steve McKenna, one of the neighbors, an email that...
Can I get, can I just get your name for the record?
Oh, of course. Ruth Stevenson, 16 Pine Needle Lane.
Thank you.
And I don't have a big comment. I know that Steve McKenna wrote a very articulate email to you. He was not sure, he had sent it late, he wasn't sure that everyone had received it. And I have a copy of it here in case anyone is, you would like me to give it to you. I could also read it, it's three paragraphs long. And the reason I bring it up is, one, because it is pertinent, two, because it does give, again, some background that's fairly logically explained about the position of the people in the neighborhood, and therefore, everyone here, for example, might not be aware of that. So I could either read it or give it.
Yeah, you could give it, I'm not going to allow you to read it at this point.
Okay.
We, we have received a copy of that, and it does speak about the history. This board is definitely aware of the history at this point.
Right, and it does confine itself to boundaries and replenishment. That's pertinent to this particular...
And we are moving forward, as you can tell with the conversation, so we're, we're not burying this.
I didn't suggest that you were, even though this, we hope there's plenty of sand that you can bury.
Right.
Okay?
If you would like to drop that letter, just in case, that would be fine.
May I bring it to you now?
Yes, you may.
Mr. Chairman, we have received these emails during the course of today. I have been trying to forward them as we get them. There may be a few from this afternoon, and we will continue to do that.
Great. Yeah, I think so. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to B, Town Administrator's Self-Evaluation. Chris, last two weeks ago...
Actually, we're on Old Business.
Oh, sorry, I'm jumping ahead. I was trying to get you out of here early.
Thanks.
Okay. Sorry, B, Cape Cod Municipal Health Group Changes to the Joint Purchase Agreement. Chris?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the board knows, I've been appointed to the, to be on the Steering Committee on the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group. I do actively participate in that, attend their meetings. One of the things that came up is that the, the group actually goes back, I think it goes back as far as 1984, and they have this joint purchase agreement. What this really is, is more almost an item of note, that they ask each of the representatives per the agreement to vote to make amendments to the agreement. I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware of what activities were occurring, so when I do go and vote, I think the vote's slated for, in October. Some of the changes to the joint purchase agreement that they have, they do things like they add dental in, that, that's dental coverage now that we had not had, I guess, originally. The other thing that they have in there, which I, I think is actually a, a couple good ideas, they have one where if, if a member leaves right now, that it's based upon the number of people that are in the plan for how they would have to be apportioned when they, when they leave. And it's a significant difference between people that are in a family program versus people that are individual versus the, the senior plans. So what they've amended this language to say, that if somebody leaves, then they have a prorated share of their portion of the overall budget. So that way, you get a better order of magnitude instead of just based upon people. A lot of these other items just talk about changing some of the, updating the, the language. There's really not a heck of a lot of other changes, but I did want to at least, and we did have the, the consultant put them down as a summary, so I passed around the, the summary information. If there is any specific questions in terms of that, I'm willing to happy to, to try to address. But I think that that really covers, one of the other changes was that a lot of the, the Steering Committee makes recommendations, and it's the overall board that makes the decision. So it's really just operational things, I think quite honestly, that give, you know, authority to where the authority should be with the entire board and not just with the Steering Committee.
Great, thank you, Chris. Any comments from the board on it? Is this something we need to vote on, Chris?
No, just, I just wanted you to be aware that I will be voting in favor of it in October, and just what we would be doing.
Okay, great.
Just a small comment. I think this is a very good approach. We have other things that work the same way, and, and maybe this should be used for those, you know, whether it's the, for the...
Cape Light Compact?
Cape Light Compact, I couldn't think of the name of it. But it's, it's a good approach.
Very good approach.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to C, Request by Real Estate and Open Space for Board Selectmen to Declare Parcel Available for Disposition, which is for Central Ave., MAP 6B Parcel L 134. It is in our packet, but...
I did, I did attend the meeting on Friday, but I'll let them do their presentation.
Kathy Green, Chairperson of Real Estate and Open Space.
Welcome.
As you know, one of our charges is to identify parcels of land that are owned, currently owned by the town, which may be of no use or benefit of the town, which might be suitable for sale. And one of those is for Central Avenue. It is a very, very small parcel, as you can see, .04 of an acre. We did reach out to the Recreation Department to see if they might be interested in it for extra parking for the Atlantic Street Beach, or to put picnic tables on, and they were not interested in either of those proposals. We don't think that there's any other organizations in town or committees, commissions, et cetera, that would be interested in it. And after some discussion with Mr. Clark and his discussions with Town Council, because of the low assessed value of this piece, it doesn't seem like it has to go through the typical procedures. So we, our recommendation is to offer it to the abutters, who might have the greatest interest, and I'm sure it would have to be publicly, publicized in the newspaper, so anyone else in the area might be, that might have interest.
Well, just to, I just, I did have an opportunity to talk to the town attorney this afternoon and get a more definitive on that. Under the procurement law, they, they've actually upped the... Under the procurement law, they, they've actually upped the, uh, the amount. It used to be, I think, five thousand, now it's up to thirty-five thousand dollars. And what the, the law calls for is to use sound business practice for the, the, the disposition of, of property. What I've done in the past, and, and I did remind this, uh, law firm, was the same law firm that I used in, in a previous community, was that we did send, in, in this lot, it, it's so small that you cannot literally build anything on it. So it probably makes more sense to offer it to, to the abutters. What I've done to, to ensure a competitive process is whatever property owners abut it, we'll send them a notice, give them three weeks, give them some period of time, say that we need to receive a bid at a minimum of what the appraised value is. We don't have to go out and spend money to do an appraisal, but to, to have them bid. And then whichever neighbor bids the highest would be the one that I would bring back the, the contract award or the award for that property. I did also ask the, the attorney, we do have to bring it to town meeting-
We do.
-as a, as a dis, deposition. My last community, we were a, a council manager forum, so I, it was a lot easier to do things like that. Here, I, uh, not here, but in accordance with, uh, Mass. General Law for Open Town Meeting, we do have to bring that back. So any recommendation, if we do the bid process, would be to have the favorable, uh, recommendation. If one of the neighbors don't bid on it, then I think the next step would be to kind of offer it to, to a larger population. Uh, so if someone wanted to, you know, store a boat or, or park a car, it's probably just big enough to do that. Again, I don't think you could do a structure because you're, you're just not going to have the, the footprint to accomplish that. But I, I would, that would be my recommendation to the board. I'm, I'm full agreement that it's a surplus piece. Uh, the only real agency that had a potential for it would be Recreation, and Recreation has not expressed any interest in it. Uh, so I would recommend to the board that, uh, administration be authorized to competitively market that to the, uh, to the abutters. And then obviously, I can report back what that process has. And if we don't get any bids, uh, then we could certainly open it up to a, uh, to a larger audience.
Okay. Anything more to add?
No. Like, Real Estate and Open Space is really just an advisory committee, so that's our advice.
Great, thank you. Comments from the board on this one?
I just have a question. Do we know that it has clear title? We don't have any title issues to worry about, or?
The town owns it.
Yeah, is it clear title to the town that it is?
Yeah, that's a good question. Uh, as part of due diligence, what I've done in the past is I have, uh, Coleman and Page will put together a purchase and sale, and as part of their due diligence, they usually do a kind of a check.
Okay, so they'll do the title search and-
They can do the title search.
I just think you have to be very clear that it has to go to town meeting, especially in Harwich.
The purchase and sale will have to have that as a stipulation to go to town meeting, successful at town meeting.
Has anyone looked at if, if one of the neighbors buys this lot and adds to their lot? Can they combine the lots and do something bigger there?
Yes. Yeah, I don't know what they could do, but certainly if there's- if there's common ownership, they would, they could assimilate the lot and have one bigger lot. But again, it's so small that I don't know if it's-
And it, where it is located is, wouldn't add much. We have had several abutters, um, contact us over the last year.
Okay.
And there's absolutely nothing on it, right? There's no structure whatsoever.
Anybody using it now? Nobody's using it to park or anything, or?
No.
Could you fit, excuse me, could you fit a couple of cars there?
Yeah, you could fit a couple of cars there, but, um, Recreation wasn't interested because they felt that, um, there's a lot of pedestrian, um, pedestrians that walk there to the beach and that it would be too dangerous for pulling out. And they didn't want to encourage that. And they didn't want to put a picnic table or anything because they felt there might be vandalism.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board on this one? We want to start the process. We want to start the process.
Well-
Peter?
Mr. Chairman, I would, um, I would move that we grant the request by the Real Estate and Open Space Committee to the Board of Selectmen to declare a parcel available for disposition. That's for Central Avenue, MAP 6B Parcel L-134.
Any second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to, to grant the request by Real Estate and Open Space to the Board of Selectmen to declare a parcel available for disposition for Central Ave., MAP 6B Parcel L-134. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I didn't hear you, Angela.
Aye, I'm sorry.
Okay, three ayes, Janelle?
No.
And I'm an aye. Four to one? Thank you.
Okay, I'm here for the next thing.
Yep, next one up is, uh, Real Estate and Open Space Recommendation for the Acquisition of the Hawx Ness Property. And for those-
Actually, our recommendation was not for acquisition.
Yeah, I noticed that.
Yeah, well, well, yes, you're right. This was the No On Nine Campaign. This was the twenty-four acres, I believe.
Yeah.
Uh, the Judith Chase-
Yeah, we, we were approached, um-
Judah Eldredge, probably?
Judah Eldredge, Judah Eldredge.
We were approached, um, by a private citizen who I think that this group recommended that they, instead of filing a citizen's petition, they follow the process that was in place for land, potential land acquisition. They came to Real Estate and Open Space, and we followed what is our procedure, which we did a site walk, we did a site evaluation, we brought, um, Mike Locke, the Director of HCT, in, uh, we had a couple of community members. We had several discussions over a period of months, and, um, our recommendation was not to pursue the acquisition of that particular property.
Okay.
We felt that it was not in real danger of being developed. Um, we felt that with, uh, limited financial resources that financial, um, monies could be used, better used elsewhere. Um, we also felt that, uh, the pursuit of using CPA funds would really limit the use of the property. And we felt that it really was a parcel that could further be considered for other municipal uses maybe down the road. So we didn't want to, we didn't want to do that. So our recommendation was not to pursue. We also were very concerned about the lack of clear title, et cetera, et cetera, which is the biggest problem there.
Okay. Chris, do you have anything to add to that one?
Yeah, I, I think just a, a little bit of, uh, history, just for the, maybe the general public to be aware. Uh, obviously, this was a site that the, uh, the board was looking at as a recharge area under the construct of, uh, what was presented last year. It would be, uh, presented to the townspeople, the town meeting did vote it, the, the residents had ballot, did not. Uh, the idea was to have the, uh, property be acquired for five hundred thousand dollars for wastewater purposes. The, there is also a, a separate state statute that when you put money into escrow for the eminent domain taking, that the first lien holder, if you would, is the, uh, any of the back taxes that are owed on it. And the back taxes owed was about equal to the appraised value that we did get. We did go through the process of doing the appraised value. The No On Nine Campaign kind of put that up, and I think as was stated, uh, they came back and they said, "Well, if it was good for the town to take by eminent domain for wastewater purposes, why can't you take it for, uh, open space purposes?" And I think the board at the time, uh, was hesitant about pursuing that. They were considering doing the petition, they decided not to, and then they went through the process, and I think Kathy did a good job of summarizing, uh, that piece. In terms of if, if the board did want to pursue that for open space, it would have to have, or at least my recommendation would be a funding source like CPC. The eminent domain, I think, does make sense in this circumstance because it is the cleanest way to clear title. And all we know is the title is a mess. So anyone that digs in, if the title's a mess, one thing government can do that no one else can do is take things by eminent domain. But do we take it for eminent domain for wastewater purposes? Or do we take it for eminent domain for open space? Is really something for, for the board to, uh, to consider.
Anyone have anything on this? Peter?
I just think that the comment that was made about, um, you know, how murky the title is, and this property's not going anyplace. I mean, I-
That's what we felt.
Yeah, that's what I think, too. But, um, it's just so cloudy to deal with this piece of property. I think that at this point in time, we're probably better off as a town spending our taxpayer dollars on something else that we can get, you know, clearer title to in a reasonably, um, timely fashion, let's put it that way. So property's not going anywhere that I can tell.
Anyone else? It would seem to me that if we spend the money to acquire this land, we get it back. The first person that gets paid is the town for back taxes. So, and if I remember correctly, the appraisal was about the same as the, uh, back taxes. So that, that's one thing to think about. Second, has anyone looked at the requirements of, uh, well, not the requirements, but for wastewater, we're, we're getting ready to approach East Harwich on wastewater. There's a reduction based on open space to the requirement for wastewater. Has anyone looked at the value of the reduction? Is that something?
Yeah, I know that's been a, a question that's been brought up in the past. I don't think that, uh, David Young, I, I was going to bring up later, but we just got the CWMP approved, uh, and that's based upon certain criteria, if you would, and certain assumptions. I think that, um, you know, Mr. Young's thought process in that is if we do take things out of inventory, that maybe once every four or five years, you look and see how much was taken out, if you would, out of development purposes and put in. One thing I, I probably should note that on the, when we were considering that as a recharge site, the, the neighbors did bring up that according to our zoning, that we're actually prohibited by zoning of putting a municipal use up there, which in my experience is pretty unusual to, to do that, but that, that we, we would have to change our own zoning before we did anything at that site. So there, there's definitely some, uh, issues. But it, it may serve, I think, to your comment, Mr. Chairman, it may serve a purpose of taking some property out of development and get some credits for us in terms of East Harwich.
It would seem that we're, it's twenty-four acres, and we're going to get the money right back. Angela?
Well, if, if that's what we wanted to do, we control enough land right now that we could do that with, without purchasing anything. Uh, when we plan on building the golf course up in the North Harwich area, we have about a hundred acres up there that, you know, we could transfer tomorrow if somebody wanted to do that.
That's town-owned, isn't it?
Yes.
So that's not taking it off the inventory, it's already off the inventory.
Yeah, I, go ahead, finish your thought.
You'd, you'd have to get it, you'd have to put it in the con, into conservation or something else to, to make that happen. But it's possible, I'm not recommending that we do that, I'm just saying it's available to do.
I do think for upcoming attractions, and I want to give Kathy the opportunity, they're, they're looking at, uh, land that is under the jurisdiction of the Selectmen to see if they can be converted from Selectmen to conservation purposes, which will accomplish that, because if it is under the jurisdiction of Selectmen or under general municipal use, it could theoretically be developed on. If it goes to conservation use, it, it, it would not. I don't know if you want to comment on that, or?
Uh, well, we had sent a letter regarding those parcels, and I guess that's going to come up at another meeting.
Yes.
The parcel off of Great Western, um, near San Pond, um-
You guys started the homework, so I wanted to give you the opportunity.
Right, right, and a few others. Zero Depot, um, Middle, those ones across from the town forest. I'm trying to think, there was one other, um-
Bayro-
But yeah, those would all, we recommended that they go under the care and custody of the Conservation Commission. Now that is up for discussion. Oh, the other one was the Bay Road property, which the Water Department may have interest in. So, um, you know.
Great.
So we do have upcoming attractions in terms of we may very well take some of those parcels and move them out.
Great. So does the board want to take any action on the Hawx Ness piece? Brooks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, uh, was able to get the information, uh, from the packet. Unfortunately, it was a bit of a computer problem, I guess, with the PDF file, but, uh, the Assistant Town Administrator assisted me in getting this information. Um, I'm concerned for a couple of reasons about this proposal to, uh, table indefinitely, uh, review of this parcel. Uh, I think that, um, uh, one of the key points that we should be looking at, and a point has come up in terms of developing a new housing production, some people are talking about updating it, but it would be a new one, uh, following the plans. And this letter, um, which is being presented, it seems to me misses a number of points that should be part of the process. Um, Mr. Spitz was working on the Open Space and Recreation Plan for the Town of Harwich, and under Community Vision B, Statement of Open Space and Recreation Goals, uh, number one is Strategic Acquisition of Environmentally Sensitive Properties with a Focus on Acquisition of Properties That Are Contiguous With Existing Conservation Land. Adjacent to this land is Hawx Ness State Park. The state is one of the abutters. Um, and then further, in our goal number three, identify on page sixty-nine of this plan, says Identify Future Open Space Acquisitions, Identify Parcels for Acquisition by the Town That Will Contribute to the Town's Open Space Goals and Objectives, Encourage Acquisitions of Parcels That Abut Existing Conservation and Open Space Land. So it would appear to me, and, and, uh, the, uh, the letter, it's a very nice letter, but it, it admits these aspects in assessment of the, of, of the parcel. Uh, and I would, I would wonder also, especially in terms of funding, the legislature, working with the Town of Harwich, uh, it was, obviously, uh, created funds to create Hawx Ness State Park. And it would seem to me this is an opportunity for the Town of Harwich to say, you know, possibly to the state, here's an opportunity with growth is planned in this particular area, we're looking at wastewater, that there would be a need for additional, uh, open space. And, uh, yes, there are title issues, uh, and it would seem to me, rather than tabling it, we should be really looking at those. Because, uh, I think that, um, uh, this, this parcel could have a significant impact. Now, in regard to the wastewater, um, you know, uh, I think the thing is that one aspect of the wastewater is the recharge. Uh, I'm not sure that, I, I've, I've been looking, but I haven't seen a location where a state park, moving the recharge adjacent to a state park, is a common practice. Uh, and when you're having growth and there's a need for, uh, recreation and open space near that Village Center, which is also mentioned in our Open Space and Recreation Plan, it would seem to me that would prioritize looking at this. So, um, I would be interested in, in knowing, because it's not in this, uh, letter, whether the state had been contacted. And, uh, because another approach, obviously, we have the CPC, but there's also state funds that we may be able to apply. And since the, it was, the state felt it was, uh, a good idea to create the park, um, whether there might be interest in partnering or, you know, reviewing this. So I think that, um, uh, I think further, uh, effort is required. The other quick point is that in looking at the parcel, not only you have the, uh, state park here, here's the parcel, here's Harwich Conservation Trust, you have another area of, uh, Harwich Conservation Trust, and then there are a number of different property owners, a number of them owned by a single, it seems, a single entity. And so whether there could be discussion of perhaps working with the private sector, you know, to connect some of these, so there could be a trail or something, which might add value to those parcels, uh, add value to this parcel of Conservation Trust, sort of like a bookend effect with the Conservation Trust on one side and the other. And so I think that, uh, in addition to the title, additional, uh, research is, uh, warranted for this. So I would urge that the, uh, uh, Selectmen consider, um, asking for additional clarification of some of these issues, and, uh, and so that, uh, there could be more discussion of this, uh, parcel. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. Uh, that was a recommendation by Real Estate and Open Space to table it, not by the Board of Selectmen yet. Kathy, can you just answer? Had, did the state get contacted? That was the question that, one question, they did not. Okay.
I think everybody's missing a point. We're not talking about buying the property. If we were talking about buying the property, we'd be talking about where do we get the funds? And is it worth it, et cetera, et cetera? We're talking about taking the property. It's a whole bunch of other stuff, taking the property, including sometimes taking it and finding out that you don't have it anymore, like we did just recently on the property, uh, which we took for affordable housing, and then how to, how to pay somebody for it. So my suggestion is that the, with, that you have to take into account that it, we don't know who the owner is, we're not buying it, is it worthwhile to take it? And one of the comments that was made is right now, so nobody knows the owner, it sits very comfortably as conservation unused land. So we leave it alone and see what happens with it. This is not gonna, you know, change in the next 10 minutes. If we try and take it, what we will do is we will encourage everybody in the state to start working on getting ownership for it. And then we will end up paying twice for it. So I suggest we just follow the suggestions that have been presented to us.
Thank you. Any, Peter?
Well, I would just say the Real Estate and Open Space Committee basically said, they looked at it, their recommendation is basically not to pursue it. Their recommendation came to us. We can just do nothing at this point in time, let's sit there. We can always come back and revisit this. If someone comes up with an idea, or if our negotiations with Chatham on wastewater will lead us in a, you know, a direction we don't see at the moment, we can always come back to this piece of property.
Sure. If it's needed, we can take it.
Yeah.
If we don't need to take it, let it sit.
Any board member wanna make an action on this, or are we moving on?
I would just say we, well, I would just say we accepted.
Knowledge receipt of it.
Yeah.
All right. Next up under Old Business is Award of Design Contract for Brooks Library Historic Preservation. Chris, you wanna just give us?
So, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll try to do a little bit of overview. The board had asked for administration, really through our facilities manager, to go through and see about getting a more detailed analysis relative to the architectural services. We have done that, that came back. Basically, at that meeting, I had pointed out that there's two parts to an architectural services contract. One is a design portion, in which they actually put together the bid specifications and then distribute it. And then the second part is contract administration, is it being constructed in a way that is consistent with the design specs that are completed. I've been trying to avoid a detailed breakdown, because if we are forced to go out to bid with that, we'd wanna preserve the integrity, if you would, of the bidder that gave us a breakdown. But that breakdown came in, basically, three components. And one of the components was historical paint analysis of $6,000. The total bid was just shy of $50,000. But the design estimate was closer to 28, so about $3,000 over what the board's intent was. So I thought because that portion was over what the board's intent was, that it would make sense to come back instead of just, you know, going over. So I, that's what, the point of this memo is really, I guess, twofold. One is, I think it's close to the 25. I think the trouble with going back out and getting somebody else is, it always seems that one architect doesn't respect the other one in front of them, and will want to do more of their own feasibility study. So I think from this point, we're kinda committed, and I think it makes sense to continue. One issue that was raised with me, and I think it's a good issue, is that there's a number in there of over, just over $6,000 for historical paint analysis. And it's my recollection that I think that that was requested by the Historic Committee, Historic Commission, to see if we wanted to change the color. I don't think anyone wants to change the color now, because we're not painting the entire building. So I don't think you want a zebra building, two different colors on the same building. But I think that the historic people may ask or insist that an analysis be done of what was the building back in the day. I think that analysis was done on the Alborough House, which, you know, I always tell people, I'm not responsible for the colors for any of these things. But, you know, so I think that, I think the $6,000 is in there to really address a concern that was raised by members of the Historic District Commission. So I, we would like to move forward with the project, out of respect for the board, and you guys said 25, that we have not moved forward. But we keep losing time here as we get into closer to winter in terms of getting the bids out and all that, so.
Thank you, Chris.
Looking for some direction.
I pulled this off the last agenda, because we didn't have a full board, and there was some questions. The 25 versus $28,000 didn't seem like a big deal to me. But I will tell you, reading the, reading the report and looking at the line item for over $6,000 to analyze the paint seemed a little bit of a waste of the taxpayers' money, if we're gonna paint it white. I also noticed that he put a limited to height of 18-foot ladder is what his proposal's based on. You could drive by that building and clearly see that it's more than 18 feet. So when are we gonna get the rest of the proposal? So it's really not me wanting to delay this. I think that we really need to get some clarification. And I was at all the CPC meetings and the Historic Commission meetings when this was discussed. And there were members that were, they really wanna know what color that building is, not because they wanna paint it white. So are we sure that we're not voting on this project to paint the color, paint the building two different colors? Because we're not, this proposal is not for the entire library, it's only for the historic portion of the library. With that, any board members, Peter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I was the one that was hung up on the $25,000 number, based on some other recent experience in a project like this. I don't think the 28,000 is, you know, obnoxious to me. But I would say, one thing that sticks out to me is the contract administration, which is basically project management. We had the town engineer sitting in this building across the street. I would suggest that he could manage that project, that we could go back to these folks and just tell us what the hourly rate is you would charge for this person, that person, that person. If we have to pick up the phone and call them and say, by the way, this piece of wood doesn't look like this, it looks like that, that kind of thing. That would be very effective for the recent project I had some experience with. Saved that client a ton of money, quite frankly. Because they're gonna get in the car, drive down here, however many miles, charges for that, they're not gonna put in a full day, because they're gonna leave their office at whatever time. And they're just not here all the time. It just strikes it that the town engineer can look out the window and there it is. You know, somebody has a question, they can wander over here and say, hey, can you help me interpret this drawing or this specification? And if he has a problem with, well, I don't really understand what paint they specified or something, he can pick up the phone and call them and try and work it that way. I just think it would work better that way myself, and it'd make me much happier. As far as the historic paint analysis goes, you know, if someone, let's just pretend that the color was brown, I don't know, let's just say they find out it was. I think we have to go into this saying, no matter what that analysis shows, that analysis gets documented and put in a vault somewhere, we're painting the building white. Because if we don't, and someone in the middle of this thing says, oh, we got a paint analysis that was brown, now we're gonna paint half a building brown, you know what's gonna happen? Next year, it's gonna be an article or some request to paint the rest of the building brown. And it's just, it's gonna happen, you know? So I think that, and by the way, I checked with CPC, you know, I was at a lot of those meetings too, as you were, Michael. And the recollection by McCready is that they wanted the analysis just to know what it was, that there's no intent from the CPC people to have that building painted, other than white. So, and I just clarified that with him, I ran into him last week on that topic. And then reimbursable expenses, if they're not under the contract administration, you're gonna save some of that money too. So, you know, should we do the historical paint analysis? I think to get this going, you could say you do this. My suggestion is that we offer a ride in the ladder truck from the fire department to whoever's gonna come down and get a couple of chips of paint, and let them ride wherever, the fire department will take them in the building. We had the same problem with height with this gentleman before, that he inspected the chimney with a pair of binoculars as opposed to climbing up. So, you know, I think it can be worked around. Actually, we have a lift now, don't we? Did the town get its lifted?
Actually, we have the appropriation, we're working on the bid.
So we get the lift?
Articulated lift.
We get the lift, they can take a ride in the lift, right? So, and the other thing, quite frankly, whoever's gonna do the work on this building, when they go to remove the lead paint, it's probably gonna have a lift there anyhow. So I don't think the guys can be climbing a ladder during that process, so I think it can all be done.
I just wanted to comment on the, I believe on the contract administration, it was up to 10 visits. So the effort that we're looking at is Sean Libby and Bob Cafarelli will be the primary people. I think where, in my conversation with Sean Libby, he was concerned that if they come back and say this soffit needs to be renovated to a historic standard, we don't have the in-house talent to be able to do that. So I think what we're looking for is, in those circumstances, where we need that historic expertise that we lack, that we would use that up to 10 visits to try to do that. So I think the intent on our side is to try to minimize that to our, best of our ability. But if we do run into something, you know, do you use cherry oak? Or, again, I'm out of my league here, but if you have something that's, you know, historically accurate, we need to have a resource to go to to answer those questions.
Angela?
I'm just a little confused. I thought we were painting the building white, like the rest of the building. And if that's the case, we're not redoing the building. We're not picking, you know, we're not going back in time and changing structure. We're painting what's there white. Now, if we wanna start a project to study that building, to take it back X number of years, and eventually get to the right colors, that's a separate project, which can be done next year or two years from now. But I thought, especially since we're just kinda trapped into white with the fact that it's a common historic color, but also it's what's there on the rest of the building. I think it's a waste of time at this point to even do the historic piece. We're painting a building white, how white is it?
Can we just remind the audience what the paint job is gonna cost? Chris, do you remember what the total amount of this was?
In the neighborhood of $500,000.
Right.
So it's an extensive paint job.
Well, I understand.
Julie?
You know, I'm a liaison to the Board of Library Trustees. And I guess my thing is also on that, is there's that section of money, roughly $6,000, $7,000 for the historical analysis. And to your point about being, you know, no different color than the white, I think overall, you know, it's kind of unfortunate to have to spend those funds when the overall understanding is it is going to be painted white. And I think there's a lot of people struggling with that. And I wonder, I wonder about being mandated to spend those funds when those, you know, my understanding anyway, of those in that building want it white. And that's really kinda money coming out of their budget. But obviously, they want to move forward.
So I guess the question is, did the Historic District Commissioner or some entity like that take a vote that said they wanted to have analysis done to learn the original paint color?
Chris?
Well, the way the process works though, is we gotta get the design finalized. The design architect would be responsible for getting those approvals from the various boards and committees. And it's at that stage that that would occur. I mean, I don't, I don't think there's really an issue with going in and saying that, you know, the intent of the Library Trustees, the intent of the selectmen, the intent of everyone at the table, is that we intend on keeping it white. So why do an analysis to change it if there's no desire to change it and take that out? I think to the point though, Angela, one of the things, they only, they only tested a couple sections. So when they peel back that paint and you see sections that are gonna be spongy, that are gonna have to be changed, that's more, I think, where we need their assistance on. I don't think we need their assistance on painting.
So to move this along, do we want to, I mean, I agree, I don't wanna hold this project up forever, but I think that there's, there's some holes and there's some questions. We could certainly approve the, we can certainly approve a piece of this and not another piece of it.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, I think they continue to be held up by a kind of a small amount of money.
Peter?
So they're not gonna remove any paint until the design is done?
Right.
So the paint analysis can be done the day that the contractor comes to the site and says, I'm gonna start taking paint off the building, which is after the bid process, quite frankly.
April or May.
Huh?
April or May.
Whatever. I would say that we move forward with the design, you know, the design, the design estimate, 27, 956. I would change the contract administration, you know, let's just cap it, you know, at some number like 4,000 at the moment, and let their expenses be, you know, $1,030. And move forward with a contract that looks like that, that gets them going. They've gotta design this thing. Once we see the design and other people see the design, we're gonna learn something about it. Maybe they'll come back and say, you know, there isn't as much stuff to do there as we thought there was gonna be, or maybe there's more of it, I don't know. I mean, the devil is in the details. I think, Mr. Chairman, I shared with you and a number of other people the design details from another architectural firm. And by the way, they specified very clearly in their specification what wood was required, what type of wood was required if you had to replace something. And actually detailed pieces that they went up and determined needed to be replaced. So I expect to get that when we see the design of this thing, other than just saying, here's a building painted white. I mean, I don't expect that, so.
I'm gonna take a shot at a motion on that.
I'll take a motion that.
Could I, I'm just doing the math quick. To try to move this along, so just rounding numbers off, if we did 28,000 for design, do contract administration at half, 7,000, and then 1,000 for reimbursable expenses for a total of 36,000.
I actually said 4,000 on contract administration, I'd like to.
I was trying to help myself.
I know.
They can always come back.
That gets to 33,000, 28, 4 and 1, right?
28, 4 and 1.
The 33,000?
33,000.
Is that your motion?
So, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we authorize the town administrator to move forward the contract for architectural services related to the library restoration project with the firm McKinley, Kelsall and Associates Architectural Services, in a total amount of?
33,000.
$33,000, broken down as $28,000 for design work, 4,000 for contract administration, and 1,000 for reimbursable expenses.
I'll second that.
Okay, so moved and seconded to approve $33,000 for architectural, I'm gonna rework this, Award Design Contract, in the amount of $33,000 to McKinley. Chris, you're gonna have to help me with that.
McKinley, Kelsall and Associates.
Yeah, for 33,000, moved and seconded. Any discussion?
From CPC funds.
From the CPC funds. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, Wastewater Subcommittee Financials for Harwich, Chatham, IMA. Peter?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I asked you to put this on the agenda, just to bring the board up to speed, since we reorganized, you know, as a board. We've had two meetings with Chatham on this topic. One was with the full subcommittee on both boards. In other words, two selectmen on our side, two on their side. Chris was in attendance at that meeting. We, basically, that meeting went through the IMA, the word part of it. We stated upfront that we weren't ready to talk about numbers, at least financials at that point in time. So we worked through that, and I think just this week, we got a clean copy of that IMA. It's coming along. I mean, in one night, we got through almost everything in there. So it's coming along, and that process continues. We had a subsequent meeting to better understand the financials, get financial information from Chatham. In that meeting I attended, Andy was there, who else was there on our side?
Was it David Young?
Oh, David Young was there, okay. So the three of us, and there was one selectman from Chatham, Dean, their town manager, and Bob Duncanson, and their financial person, Alex. And so at that meeting, we started to share some spreadsheets. They pulled out a spreadsheet with the full, I don't know, 30-year bonding, you know, breakdown of principal and interest and that type of thing. We started to talk about, you know, what did it really cost to build the plant? We talked about the grants they got, we talked about their flow rates, et cetera, et cetera. So we have all that information now. And now it's our opportunity to try and figure out what that all means. We'll get through the words, but ultimately, we have to figure out what it's worth. And so I just have a couple of questions I'd like to get consensus or at least agreement from this board on, as we, our little subcommittee, go through and try and hone the numbers, if you will. There is grant funding involved in this, or there was grant funding involved in this. Our position has been at this point in time that we shouldn't be, or Chatham shouldn't be taking credit for that grant funding. In other words, they got a grant, if the cost of the plant was, you know, $34 million and they got a $10 million grant, they should reduce it to that, and that's the number we should be talking about. I hope we all agree with that, that point, okay? There was some soft costs they had associated with obtaining the grant and doing some feasibility and things like that. And I think one of their selectmen mentioned it might be as much as a million dollars. And we pushed back on that, and we said, well, we're really not interested in that, because they had to do it anyhow, okay? So I would hope we agree with that. They brought out the fact they're paying interest on their debt. They brought out the fact they're paying interest on their, on their debt service, if you will. Quite frankly, we looked at it in our little discussions like we're buying a house, basically, and we don't care how much they paid in interest to buy that house or own that house. We just care what the, you know, what the house is worth, that's all. So we had been pushing back and saying, "We, we have no interest in interest," is the way we're describing it. And I would hope we would at least have that tact to start with, okay? It's my, it's my, would be my intention that whatever Harwich ends up paying them, let's just say it's a million dollars in a chunk, and we do a couple of chunks, that whenever we make a payment to them, that would go to reduce their principal on their debt, as opposed to going into some other fund that, so they'll be saving interest in the future, assuming we make payments, okay? We learned, by sitting with David Young and talking it through with Bob Dunkinson, that by the time East Harwich starts to flow stuff, sewage to Chatham, that plant, which came online, I think it was March of two thousand twelve, will be nine years old. So we're buying into a used plant, basically. So then the concept with us came up of depreciation, and I think, you know, you could argue some things should be depreciated, whether it's everything, whether it's, you exclude the building and just take the equipment that's in the building. There's some form of depreciation that should play into the financial analysis, and I hope you guys would agree with that. You can argue about, you know, is it a thirty-year depreciation, is it twenty years, is it fifty years, whatever it is, but that's the discussion. And by the way, all along, we have always talked about, and they have too, that Harwich is going to pay its fair share, if you will, of the operation maintenance costs of this building. So buying into a facility that's nine years old, and the maintenance costs are going to be what they are, and probably escalating over time, I would guess. So those are the basic questions and premises we have. We're trying to set up another meeting with Chatham in September, at which I've started to just organize the thoughts of our group and put them into a document, but I'd bring that document, obviously, to this group at some point in time. But I think with the information we have from Chatham now, and some guidance here in this direction, that we can get together in a week or so and figure out what this, at least our opening play should be. Now, recognize that Chatham initially, when we sat down, was at nine point four million dollars, I think, something like that, and we obviously think that's a little bit too rich. So more to come.
Thank you, Peter. Questions? Julie?
I'm just curious, when, in discussions, did anything, any questions about their water issues come up at all?
Not yet. That, that was in the paper again this week. You know, maybe we end up selling them water, and they take our stuff. I don't know. I mean, it's, they have a serious problem there.
Yeah.
They're down to, what, two wells and whatever, and, I mean.
And a while till that other, what, two more years till that other well is up and functioning?
Yep.
And then possibly looking at irrigation systems and all that does, I mean, will that overall have some impact on what, what we would be doing here in Harwich? I mean, I definitely think there's, there's issues that we should be looking at related to some of those.
No doubt about it. I, the recent information, we got some, we were asking about flow information. The last time I was at a meeting, which was when we initially kicked this thing back a year and a half ago, I think their flows are around a hundred and forty thousand average per day, and now they're up to about two forty. Isn't that the number?
Yeah, I was looking at that info. In the summer, it goes in the two forty, two fifty range, and then during the winter, it's a hundred and forty.
Yeah, and then those pumps are operating like twenty-one hours a day, so that goes back to your point about, you know, we're buying into something that's being used quite extensively.
The other one, the other item that we will be buying into, assume we go into this, is pump station six, is six, is the interface, I think it's six, is the interface?
Interconnection, yeah.
Yeah, the interconnection between Harwich and Chatham. Chatham will be using that station as well, with some flow from, from that area. You know, it's going to connect down by sort of the bike trailer across this one thirty-seven there, somewhere in that area. But that station, it, you know, will have the large, largest use of that station, if you will. So they will be looking to us to pay for at least our fair share, whatever that means, of that particular facility. Design work, you know, construction work, et cetera, some.
Angelo, any comments?
No, I, in support of what Peter just said.
Great, Janelle?
There's one other piece you should know, that we, we had all sorts of discussions with them. For example, they built in the ability to enlarge that plant, so we know that's already built into a certain level. So we have all of that information.
Positive conversation still, Peter? They still?
Oh, yeah.
Recognition that this is as important for them as it is for us?
We all know we want to do this. It's going to come down to dollars, I think. I mean, you know, we worked through ninety percent of the words, you know, and there didn't seem to be any showstoppers in the words. And we're all in a, you know, we went through that, I would say, remarkably fast.
And did we get through, or we're not to the point yet where we've addressed that extra one million dollars that they had put onto cost? Is that?
Well, the only worry with cost at the moment is they put out the nine point four million, and we haven't responded.
Okay.
In our, in the initial document, there was, you know, there was out there, Harwich had in there, it's six million dollars. We don't have justification for that either. So, I mean, we're going to work through a rationale that says, based on the numbers we have, here's what we think is an opening play, what we should be paying, and then we'll go from there, so.
So based on the lack of questions from the board, I'd say it was a yes to all of your questions and consensus.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll take it that way.
Thank you. All right, so that gets us through old business. So on to new business, year-end budget transfers. Andy Gould, our finance director?
Good evening.
Hey, Andy.
What I submitted to the board was line items that were in the budget that were over expended and are in deficit. And a few years ago, I think it was municipal relief package by Deval Patrick allows us to make some transfers at the end of the year without having to go to town meeting. So that's what these are. It's a total of a hundred thousand dollars. The majority of it is almost forty-five thousand for legal, and, you know, there's been a lot of legal issues over the years. You did ask how much was budgeted. It was a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So we were in excess of two hundred thousand for the legal line item. There were some salary items there, and there were several departments, and it was different reasons. DPW was overtime. Building was due to, because business is good, and they had so many inspections to do, they just ended up having, they spent more money than they had in the budget. So it's a good thing. There was some, three departments that I believe made some calculation errors when they were budgeting their salary line items for fiscal year sixteen, so it was just an error. And then, I think that's about it. Oh, when the selectmen, there was an unclassified amount, and that was due to, there was, I think, all five selectmen went to the MMA trade show, and one of those, it was, I think it was a four, five hundred dollars, was reimbursing the person for going there. And then there was like, I think it was nine hundred dollars for some filing fees to the registry of deeds for beddements. So that's the majority of the transfers, and fortunately or unfortunately, we end up doing this every year, so it was kind of a year-end cleanup issue.
Thank you, Andy. Questions from the board on this? Peter?
Andy, I think I understand it, but just to be clear, I look at the spreadsheet, and just take the first item. It says, Department of Selectmen Account and Desk is due in subscriptions. The amount is eleven, eleven hundred and nine dollars. Then you say, account to transfer a budget from is the assessed data processing. That would be the eleven hundred and nine dollars would be the number you'd move over there.
Correct.
And the only reason I'm asking that is because when you get down to legal, you have three different things that show up, and, you know, for fifteen thousand apiece, postage, Medicare, and health insurance. And you, you identified those as numbers. So I just want to make sure the clarification is that you're going to, you're going to transfer those exact amount of monies from, from the one account to another.
That's correct.
Thanks.
Angelo?
Actually, I, I find the hundred thousand dollars of overage on the size of our budget a relatively small number. It's actually, you should be very pleased.
I think we're actually significantly better than last year. I think we're closer to two hundred thousand last year.
I don't remember last year, but yes, for a fifty million-plus budget, a hundred thousand is a very small percentage.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a positive.
I think the legal buy itself was almost a hundred thousand over, so.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, the, the explanation was there, and I know we discussed legal, and you're going to have an update on legal. We can kind of get an idea where this two hundred thousand is going.
Yeah, we generally have, once a year, John Giorgio from Coleman and Page will come in and do a, an overview of where we are with the legal, the different cases. I wish I could say, you know, ninety-nine percent of these are people suing us, so you have to defend yourself. So unfortunately, that's the reality of this. So we, we have a lot, and he'll come in and do a overview in executive session of the, the current standing of those cases.
Excellent. Any other comments from the board?
Just one last comment, just in terms of, we, we do need a formal vote on this.
Yes.
They did have in the law, it was up to three percent, and the, the new Municipal Relief Act actually lifts, lifts that requirement of three percent. It, it takes that cap off. So in the future, we'll have the ability to have a little bit more flexibility, which is good news.
Any motion? Peter?
Mr. Chairman, based on the recommendation of the town administrator and, and the finance director, I would move that we approve the, the recommendation to transfer year-end balances from accounts that are in surplus to the accounts that are in deficit, as proposed in the memo provided to us, for a total amount of a hundred thousand twenty dollars.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the year-end budget transfers from surplus accounts to deficit accounts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Andy. All right, now to the B that I started on an hour or so ago. Town administrator's self-evaluation. Chris, thank you. We, this was on the agenda for last week, and I pulled it because, or two weeks ago, because you weren't here. So we did receive, and hopefully the rest of the board has read your evaluation. Is there any?
Yeah, I just, I, I think it kind of stands for itself. I, when we did the original evaluation back in May, I think a couple of things. One, I didn't have the time, you know, when we do things in May, it's, it's really difficult because we're getting ready for town meeting and, and doing other things. So I wanted to take the time to do the, the self-evaluation. So I, I've done that in, in terms of it. The other thing I just wanted to at least comment on, on the priority of the goals and objectives. I know the board voted the goals and objectives, and, you know, I want to try to match up the goals and objectives going forward for seventeen. So I'll go through, once the, we get those more finalized, to see, and then come back to the board and have a discussion on that. As the board is aware, and I'll just paraphrase a little bit, that, you know, I thought we had a real good year as an organization. Overall, my evaluation the board gave me resulted in me not getting a cost of living adjustment, and I am asking the board to reconsider that. I think the board said they were open to reconsidering it more in a December timeline, but I'm asking that that be considered, reconsidered early.
Thank you, Chris. Comments from the board? Anyone? Chris, I, I, you know, in reading the, in reading the memo and the comments from you, you know, one, one was the, whereas the board had split votes, internal disagreements, and these should not be reflected on my capacity as a town administrator. You know, looking at the past board and, and the comments from the, from Angelo's summarizing the review, I think if there was ever a point that that board or past board agreed, it was at that review process. I think that there was four, anyway, four of the scores, four different board members' scores, were all within a point or two of each other. You know, and there's, there's several things we could go back through if you want, but the, you know, the remarks on, on transparency and communication were, were, were the big ones. And I will say that this year so far, I think you've done an excellent job with us. I think all emails have been forwarded. Most emails are answered very timely, and I think that we're on the right track. The, you know, we did agree to review it. I know that one board member, I believe that the, the board member that's not here anymore, talked about revisiting and making it retroactive. I think in the minutes, it reflects that Peter said he would consider it, but the best, the rest of the board did not, and the recommendation was made to do a review at six months and, and give you a raise based on a six-month review. So that, that's my recollection, without getting, diving too deep into the minutes on this and, and comments, but, you know, at this point, I, I would not be, I won't move to reconsider. Anything else from the board? Angelo?
Just a comment. I think you're absolutely right in seeing a, a positive and major change this year. And if we were to do a review now, I think it'd be much more positive than it was before. So, and by the way, if we wanted to do that, I would, I would support that, because I think it's good to be positive, you know, to, to say, yes, you, you obviously heard us, you're doing good, if you will, and since you're doing good, we will change what we did. But I don't want to go back and redo the document we did before. I would leave that alone. If we do anything, we do it based on what we've seen in the last three months, four months, whatever that timeframe is. But I don't know if anybody else is, is up for that.
I, I would be up for putting it on the next agenda for conversation and setting a date and, and process for that, or waiting the six months, but certainly not something I want to vote on tonight.
Okay.
Peter?
I, I think we just need to move forward, quite frankly. You know, we're going to have new goals and objectives. We have a new board. I think the six-month timeframe is the right time to do it. At that point, if we decide we want to do something retroactive, we could always do that. I mean, that's possible. I think we should plan for success moving forward, and, you know, when you think about six months, to put it into the, what, December timeframe? Is it, it's like a Christmas present? I don't know, so, whatever. But I think that, I think that's what we ought to do. I mean, otherwise, we're going to sit here and argue about things, and it's not going to be, I don't think it's going to be a positive ending.
I like the word that you said in there, retroactive. I thought, that's, that's helpful.
I just did the, the last comment I'll make is the clear recollection comment, Chris, about the FY sixteen goals, and, and then the comment about the exceptionally extensive goals for this year. You know, I think in my mind at least, the goals and objectives this year with actions and deliverables gives us something to really focus on and something to grade on, and I think they are a lot more clear and not vague, and I think that certainly will help the process. Anything else on that subject? Okay, C is Harwich Police Federation Union Contract. We did meet earlier, as, as mentioned, beginning of this meeting in executive session, where we went over the Harwich Police Union, Federation Union Contract, and agreed to extend it one year, which puts both police contracts as superior and the patrolman with four-year, a four-year contract. It was a one-year extension. So this brings the patrolman up to the same as the superiors. Very, very few changes, but, but some changes, a handful of changes, that brings them in line with the superior officers. Chris, any comment?
No, I think you got the, the flavor of it.
Okay, and we voted on that and approved that in executive session. Do we need to vote that through now, open session? Can I get a motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I make a move that we approve the Harwich Police Federation Union Contract.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, second up is the Assistant Conservation Agent Job Description, which we also took up in executive session, and we also agreed that we were going to approve that in executive session. Can I get a motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the Assistant Conservation Agent Job Description.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Assistant Conservation Agent Job Description. This was approved at town meeting. This is a nineteen-hour-a-week position, not a full-time position. It's an assistant for Amy Usowski, our conservation, conservation head. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next up is the intermunicipal agreement between the town, golf department, and Monomoy Regional School District to mow the fields at the Monomoy Regional High School.
So, Mr. Chairman, we had. So, Mr. Chairman, uh, we had myself and, uh, Mr. Carpenter, the superintendent, have had, uh, discussions. Obviously, the board's probably aware that when we had the, uh, the building turnover, uh, there were some issues related to the, uh, the fields and the completion of the fields. So, uh, because of the proximity of the, uh, the golf operation being right next to the school, uh, we did render some assistance during last fiscal year to, uh, keep those fields in a, in a better shape than the, uh, the contractor. Uh, the contractor came from the Chicopee area, uh, so easily, at, at least a three-hour drive probably from here, uh, to come do maintenance on a field, not very practical, uh, and hence, the results were not very practical. Uh, what we did decide to do is to, uh, reach an agreement, we did put money into the budget, uh, I think approximately eighty-four thousand dollars, uh, to cover for FY, uh, seventeen, to have the golf department go over and maintain the fields. Uh, really what we need to do, because it's a, uh, an agreement between, uh, administration or the, or the selectmen ultimately, and Monomoy Regional School District, uh, we need to have a, uh, intermunicipal agreement. So I did take the liberty of drafting one up, uh, kinda modeled on some of our other experiences uh, with, uh, the town of Chatham and, and certainly, uh, with Monomoy. So I have the agreement, and I would ask the, uh, the board to approve it. Uh, what it has in there is a, uh, three-year agreement. Calls for, uh, the superintendent and myself and the development of the budgets, uh, to put in the necessary amount. Uh, we do have a, a hard amount for FY seventeen, 'cause it's already built into the budget, but we wanted to leave a little bit of flexibility in there because, uh, if the schools wanna have additional work done, uh, if the fields need to be, um, greened up more, or, or more, uh, fertilizer, or pesticides, or what have you, need to be put on there, and they wanna invest the additional money, we wanted to make sure that we had the, uh, ability to have that flexibility each, each year, uh, depending upon Sean Fernandez's, his expertise. I mean, he certainly has a, uh, an expertise in the, uh, in turf management, so to, to give that level of flexibility. And quite honestly, too, to see what the schools wanna try to accomplish, uh, in that given year.
Thank you, Chris. Questions from the board, Angelo?
A question, the flow of the money. So, Monomoy pays the town to do this?
Correct.
What happens to the funds?
We put, uh, money into the, uh, the golf budget, so we have, I think it's eighty-two thousand. We have eighty-two thousand dollars in expenses, so then that just comes in to offset that, so at the end of the year, theoretically, we're at zero.
That, that, that's fine. Uh, my, I was just concerned, 'cause we're starting to mix fees and taxes and all those kinds of things, it becomes difficult.
I do think it's important, too, that, that the reason for doing this is that if we were to have this done outside of the two agencies and just done privately, I mean, the estimate was closer to a hundred and twenty-five, and we pay seventy-five percent of the bill, so it makes sense for us to, uh, partner up in this circumstance.
Thank you.
Peter?
Just a clarification, in terms of the agreement, it, it runs fiscal year, it started July first, two thousand sixteen, right?
Mm-hmm.
So it goes fiscal year, and then down on the spreadsheet for the landscaping budget for two thousand seventeen, it appears it's not, is, is that, that's not fiscal year two thousand seventeen, it's the starting date roughly April first through November thirtieth. I guess my question is, we're gonna run, are we gonna run into overlapping the fiscal year with the, um, the period of performance, I guess I would call it? 'Cause they started cutting grass April first, right?
Right.
Or will next year, I mean, they started April first, they're gonna go through November thirtieth. So April, May, June, that came out of last year's budget somehow, some way, or did we get reimbursed for that?
Yes.
At some number?
Yes.
Okay, and then, so, two thousand seventeen, this budget, which is April first of two thousand seventeen through November thirtieth, you know, has the numbers in it, but it's gonna overlap two fiscal years, right?
Uh...
You're gonna have April, May, and June of two thousand seventeen.
I, I think the idea here is we need to match up the, the, the planting cycle and, and kinda when we can do it with the, so the eighty, the eighty-two thousand would cover for that portion of the year. So for the beginning, from April to June thirtieth, we did it under kind of a, uh, just a separate agreement that we had had under when the, uh, making the transition from the construction budget to the, uh, school budget.
Okay, but, but for next year, two thousand seventeen, when they do, do you bill this, by the way, on a monthly basis or something? How's this work?
I think we were gonna bill it on a monthly basis.
Okay, so as long as you guys are comfortable with the total budget, April, May, and June that you'll bill gets paid out of two thou- FY seventeen.
Correct.
And then the rest of the months, they get paid out FY eighteen.
Correct.
As long as you guys are okay with that.
Yeah.
That's exactly the way the golf course has to pay for their own bills, because they overlap the same thing.
'Cause of the seasons.
Yeah.
Any other comments from the board on that? Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the intermunicipal agreement between the town, golf department, and Monomoy Regional School District to mow the fields.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the intermunicipal agreement between the town golf, uh, course and the Monomoy Regional School District. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, next up on the agenda.
Yeah, the next item, uh, Mr. Chairman, i- and I wanna make sure that, um, put this in the right, right context. The police department acts as our licensing agent for the, for the board of selectmen. It's their responsibility to make sure that the licenses are adhered to. There are certain times and in certain cases in which there are, uh, events that occur that the, uh, police department believe that there's sufficient probable cause to request that the board of selectmen, uh, call for a public hearing of a license holder. So where we are this evening is that they have gone down to, uh, the, the Perks establishment. They've had, uh, eight, eight encounters, uh, three of which, I think the, uh, from my conversation with the chief, believed were serious enough to warrant, uh, doing a formal public hearing. And the reason why I'm kinda doing this is the recommendation for the board this evening is just simply to call a public hearing. What will happen is then the police department will put together, along with Coleman and Page, kind of what the, uh, the issues are. Uh, we'll send it to the, uh, license holder. The license holder will have an opportunity to, uh, bring whoever representatives they want. Sometimes people bring, they come themselves, sometimes they bring, uh, attorneys with them, whatever the, the case may be. And then the board has a, uh, a formal public hearing to go through the complaints that have been, uh, have been identified, and then, uh, they can respond to those complaints, and then the board decides what action it wants to take uh, in terms of, uh, the license, uh, the license holder. So tonight is really a very, the first preliminary step, if you would, uh, to commence that process. Uh, but the police chief and, and I think the, the police department believes there are sufficient grounds to, uh, to call for a, uh, public hearing to be held.
Thank you, Chris. What is the criteria for the complaints? Now, it's being, it's alleged that there's eight complaints, but is there, is one complaint, a public hearing? Is two complaints, a public hearing?
There would be, uh, in this case, if there was eight incidents, three of which that would be actionable, for lack of a better term. So there would be three complaints that would be sent to the, uh, to the license holder, and three complaints would be the, the jurisdiction in which the board would hear those three complaints and, and go through and adjudicate the, the three complaints.
Okay, so i- in the way that I'm reading this, the chief put together a document, and, and Tommy, deputy chief, is here, because the chief could not be, the chief put together a document with the alleged complaints. In reading through the packet, I, I, I thought that the most interesting report was that, um, by Aaron Goshgarian. He, just give me one second. This was the seventh response for a noise complaint at Perks this summer. However, five of the seven complaints were unfounded upon the arrival of the police officers.
Correct.
So if they're unfounded...
The officer arrived, did not observe any violation or hear any violation.
Okay, so there's really only three documented, turn down the music or the strobe light?
Correct. Operating after the hours of the, the license would allow.
Okay. And that, that, I guess my question, Chris, is that, is that warranting the need for a public hearing?
Yes, as, as the, uh, the licensing agent for the board, he has indicated that that's sufficient grounds to call for a public hearing.
Okay. Peter?
I just asked a question, without details, please. I'll say that for a hearing, all the violations I saw in noise complaints, are there any liquor license violations?
No.
Just strictly noise?
As far as I, I'm aware, it's just, uh, noise after hours or excessively loud.
Okay, I understand. I mean, quite frankly, in my opinion, liquor license violations are typically much more significant than noise violations. So I just wanna make sure, 'cause we didn't add that information here. The other thing I would just say is that, you know, assuming we'd have, if we move forward a hearing on this, there's a notice, timeline and whatnot. Hopefully, it gets beyond the season, I mean, these people are running a business, and I think they need to get through the season, if you will. But I think, based on the complaints we heard, you know, I think this board would wanna hear from the, um, the owner of the facility, the manager of the facility as to, you know, what they did or what they're going to do to, um, limit these from happening in the future, so. I agree with you that some of them look like they were non-existent, but, um, um, you know, if you remember, we used to have a, a lot of fun with some folks in West Horige, a couple of different groups in West Horige, and, um, let's hope this one doesn't get to that point.
Well, to, just to add onto what you just said, we've also authorized some additional, uh, drinking and songs and m- music i- in Harwichport, so I think we have to watch what's going on, so it doesn't spread.
Oh, the, excuse me, the other thing we, I, I think is gonna be informational for us, I think, is that, um, you know, my sense of it is that a number of locations on there, at least as far as entertainment goes, have different times when they can end. And, I don't know if you remember, when we talked about awarding some licenses here recently, it was, hey, let's check and see what everybody else is doing, and maybe, maybe there isn't consistency, I don't know, maybe there should be.
Yeah, we, we did find in the, uh, review of the files that there were some that were approved prior to a previous board's policy about having kinda everybody at a, I think it was like a ten o'clock, uh, you know, no, no external music. Some people that had licenses issued prior to that policy, uh, still had the, a different time. So one of the things I think administratively, we will recommend to the board is, we should treat everybody in Harwichport as, as the same, and just to kinda give them notice when we renew to that we're gonna be doing that or recommending that.
Yeah, and I, excuse me, I, I think we've also had one or two other complaints, at least we've seen an email from some other establishments about noise, so. Maybe there's a bigger discussion there.
Okay. Well, if the three noise complaints warrant a public hearing, then we will schedule a public hearing. Do you need a motion on a public hearing, or do you want to just...
Yes.
Okay, can I get a motion on this?
Mr. Chair, I move that, um, we s- schedule a public hearing regarding violation of liquor entertainment license um, by Perks Coffee Shop.
Okay. Second on that?
A little second for discussion, but I think it's really about entertainment license, it's not liquor license that we're talking about, right?
Well, he, the chief has liquor slash entertainment in his header.
It's not liquor license, though, right?
Uh, it's my understanding, uh, that it's primarily the entertainment portion that's causing the issue.
And it is two separate licenses.
Yeah, it is two separate licenses.
Okay.
Okay, I'll amend my motion to, um, have a public hearing to review the entertainment license of Perks due to three, uh, recorded violations.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, seconded to schedule a public hearing for violations of entertainment license by Perks. Any discussion?
Uh, can I just ask one question? So when you're saying that, um, other businesses have a different timeframe, are they later or earlier?
Yes.
Later.
Later. And I don't think it was anything intentional, it was just...
Right.
When you have seven or eight different establishments, and you're doing a, a scan of time, and...
Yeah, I'd like to expand on that question. Um, Chris, are they indoor or outdoor entertainment licenses?
All these, uh, deal with outdoor.
Yeah, that's generally where the problem is.
I don't even know any other places that offer outdoor entertainment down there.
What do you mean?
Down in Harwichport.
What about the...
Amber and, uh...
Yeah.
Mano, we approved the license.
Amber, Mano.
We said ten o'clock for them. I'm talking about later.
Oh.
Ten o'clock's later for a lot of people.
Amber says the license.
No, but they're, you're saying, Chris, just so, clarification, you're saying that the other ones are, are later than ten o'clock, right? I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
There's an inconsistency in the...
Yes.
Before we go to vote on this, 'cause I'm gonna set a date, is there anyone here from Perks that has any... I just wanna know if there's any meetings that you can't make. The next scheduled board of selectmen meeting is in two weeks.
We're getting married September tenth.
Congratulations.
We're not gonna want a huge honeymoon, 'cause we're here for the weekend, so we are doing a mini moon in Antucket the Monday and Tuesday. And just like, I mean, we do everything to keep...
Oh, can you get up, can you get up to the, can you get up to the mic, I'm sorry?
Okay, hi.
Yeah, we'll discuss this.
Hi, just state your name, please.
Sarah, help me, I go. So, we're getting married September tenth, so, like, that week isn't great for us, but, um, as far as the violations go, we do everything we can to keep it down, nothing is ever intentional.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna do this at the public hearing, but thank you ver- thank you. And, um, they're only, they're only alleged at this point, they're only allegations, so...
Yeah, I mean, it's all the same person calling every time.
We could probably do like the third week in September, if that, I don't think there's a pressing need to get to it.
Okay, does that work, does that work for you guys?
Yeah, I just wanna say one thing.
Thank you.
Taylor Powell, Perks, I've talked to you guys before, um, I, maybe since the, the, what was her name, I'm sorry?
Deputy Chief Tom Gagnon.
Uh, Tom Gagnon's here. Uh, I was never informed of a violation of any kind, I never got, never signed anything, never received anything. This is all news to me, it was a, a warning to turn down the music, we responded immediately, if you read all the reports, we acted accordingly. I respect the law, respect you guys. What's the proper protocol on a violation, on letting the owner know, or, like a ticket, you guys get pulled over, you sign something. I never signed anything, this is news to me, I found out about it last night, and that's why I'm here.
Any insight on that, Tom?
Yes, sure, um, July sixth, just to quote, uh, the manager.
Microphone.
I'm sorry. The officer reported that they spoke with the manager, uh, music was turned down. August tenth, music coming from Perks, music shut down after police spoke with a staff member. And August thirteenth, uh, regarding the loud music, and, uh, the manager was contacted, strobe shut off, and music turned down.
Thank you.
When the material is sent, the, the police reports will be included in that, and this isn't trying to surprise people. The whole point of giving you the opportunity to get the material is to, to go over it.
They're the, they're the, the law enforcement is the enforcement agent on the license, the entertainment license.
Right.
So the complaint's going to them, they're bringing it up to us as a violation, as a licensing authority. The public hearing is where we will discuss.
Okay, I, I mean, I, obviously, if that needs to happen, it'll happen, I, I don't think it warrants that. And if you do look at the dates, two of those infractions, if they were infractions, uh, fell on stroll nights, and there's all, obviously, a big influx of people on those, on those nights. Um, so, you know, again, whatever we have to do, of course, I wanna comply with the law in the town, but, um, you know, this is all news to us, and we'll continue to comply, we have thirteen days left before we close our doors. If we have to see this later, we'll see it later, and I appreciate your time on the matter.
Great, thank you.
Happy wedding.
Yeah.
Yes.
Congratulations.
So Charlene, you have the date, third week in September.
I think it's the nineteenth of September.
And they'll obviously be notified with, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Great. Chris, for that meeting, could you make sure that we have, or prior to that, the rest of the entertainment licenses and when they're allowed to operate, do you, I think, uh...
Sure, I think generally those, uh, entertainment license, I think, are January one.
Okay.
So we, we have some time to make those adjustments.
Okay, thank you. Chairman, go ahead.
Just talking about that same thing, since you're talking about the other entertainment licenses. Um, I know they say right now not to exceed the premise, you know, in, in Harwichport, you have a very difficult situation where you're looking at, you know, you talked about point oh-four acre lots, um, compared to some of the other areas. We just passed a bylaw for a noise bylaw that uses plainly audible at a hundred and fifty feet. It may be time that we start looking at the language that was passed at town meeting and adopting that, um, in these licenses.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the town administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have, uh, several items, uh, this evening, I'll try to work my way through them. Just, uh, first off, I just wanna, uh, acknowledge that we did get a, uh, certificate of achievement from the Bureau of Consular Affairs for Passport Services presented to Harwich Community Center uh, about kinda outstanding service. So I know, uh, Carolyn is here this evening, so just to publicly acknowledge Carolyn for a, uh, a, a job well done and recognized by the, uh, by the federal government, that they do a, a very nice job.
Job well done, Carolyn.
The, uh, next item... The next item is I received a request on the launching drones from the beaches. The Recreation Department had a policy that you cannot launch drones from the beach. I had a public beach. That policy, from my conversation with Attorney Giorgio, is very much enforceable. The question came up, well, what happens if someone launches a drone, which in this case was the request, from a neighboring town or a neighboring airport and flies over the beach? Basically, he said as a general rule, anything, you know, above... In the air is the jurisdiction of the FAA. So, there is no hard and fast rule about what the height is of the drones flying over. Also, the next item that I have is on the Cape Cod Commission. We petitioned to have a road safety audit done for Route 39 at Pleasant Bay. We have put that full material on the town's website. Certainly, the board got the full audit material in your packet. I think it makes sense to schedule a time to have a... Or my recommendation would be to schedule a time to have a... More of a discussion in regards to what the findings of that report came out. I know Mr. Hooper wanted me to say a few words in regards to that. We did put in the... Actually, when I started, we had the stop signs that have the lights on them, Christmas tree lights, if you wanna call them that. And it's interesting, that had no impact on the number of accidents. Actually, accidents went up by one. So, we did put in last November, we looked at restriping sections of 39 to try to narrow the roadway, if you would. And not that, you know, it's... We wanna be careful not to, he says, jinx ourselves, that we've had three accidents. So, from 15 or 16 from the last two years, it has dramatically reduced. I think one thing that's interesting in those accidents, though, for that area and even in these ones recent, a lot of injuries, a lot of ambulance rides. So, a very high percentage of the accidents are at higher speeds. And then one of the things that came out, which I believe administratively we should be doing, is that we wanna improve sightlines. Vegetation sometimes grows from people's private property onto public property, and it's obvious in that area that sight distance is of some significance to those accidents. And that a few of the others, some of the signage had gotten to be kinda out of... Not out of date, but just gets worn down over time. So, we will update some of the signage and put in some additional signage. So, I don't know if the board wants... At least maybe at one of our meetings, Mr. Chairman, you can let me know what date you think makes sense to have people come in and commence a discussion at that. Also, I would at least throw it out to the board. I think I did have a meeting administratively, so we had a discussion in which staff did that. So, certainly, if the board doesn't wanna have a meeting and have staff do it and then bring back a recommendation, you do that on all the animal, all the dog complaints. I get tasked with doing those.
Chris, on that, I think I would like to see the staff recommendation, but it certainly could... This warrants putting on the next agenda if we could get the material... If everything's ready to discuss it, traffic reports and recommendations, that would be helpful.
Yeah, he didn't do any... He just said options. He didn't provide any... What recommendations?
Okay.
So, I could take a look and see what I think makes sense and provide some recommendations from... They didn't... Well, they didn't provide a overall recommendation.
Like there was two bad accidents there last week again?
Yes, there were.
I was just amazed reading the fact that there were very little advantage in doing anything. You know, they lists five or six different options, and then did it work or would it work? And the answer is no, and it's marginal, and it's low. It's gonna be hard to find...
Well, I think that...
...a recommendation.
Well, I guess I'll put the cards on the table. My two cents said if you put the roundabout in...
I understand.
And trust me, 10 years ago, you never would've heard me utter these words. I'm not a big fan of roundabouts. But the one thing it said, and I think in the report, it said 82% of reduction in the severity of the accidents and 82% reduction in the fatality, and that's federal. So, I mean, that's a big data pool. And I think the rationale is when you have an accident, when you have cars going zero from a stop position and cars coming 50 miles an hour, that's where you get the severity of the accidents. When you get the roundabout, the roundabout makes people go 20 miles an hour. And when you have a 20 mile an hour accident, it's a heck of a lot different than a 50 mile an hour.
I think that's what it says, but...
Thank you, Chris. I'll put that on the next agenda.
In terms of just a couple other... We did receive an announcement from the building commissioner that he has accepted a position in Town of Wareham. So, we are in the process of looking at that. We have an internal posting out. I think that deadline is coming up this Friday. So, we will see if we get any internal applicants for that and report back to the board with a... Hopefully, report back to the board with a recommendation for an appointment. On the... I did receive a request from the... The...
Superintendent.
The school superintendent. I've been talking a lot tonight. So, and there was an issue about they didn't have... The schools didn't have a channel that was dedicated for education. It wasn't as functional, so we were putting a lot of our meeting... A lot of their meetings on our Channel 18. Now that they're up and running, they're actually doing live broadcasts as well of their meeting. So, we've been... I guess people have asked to have them played in both places. Quite honestly, I was surprised at the number of meetings we cover. So, I mean, it will get lost in the wash for government. And I think when people look, they look to education. So, we should have Channel 22 as the education channel. They should find education on the education channel. That's all by contract anyway, that that's laid out that way.
I don't understand that, because I think for years, that has been the education channel.
Yeah.
Since it started.
It's been... Yeah, it's been dedicated for that. I don't think they've done a lot of airing on it. So, they've relied upon us to put their own. On the CWMP was... We did receive official approval from that. So, we've made now through, not only through DEP, but also through the Cape Cod Commission. So, the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan has been approved at the two levels, which I think is great news, that we have a formalized plan now in which to continue to implement. We have been implementing it as we go.
Sixth town to have it, right?
Yeah, is that right?
Yeah.
On the... We did receive a grant for coastal zone management for the design of the land side on Sacrotucket Harbor. So, we have a meeting, I think it's in early September, to meet with the grant award agency to get the details on that. So, that's good news. The town had appropriated $250,000 for design work related to the land side improvements. One of the things, it's funny that we get a lot of requests when people come into town hall for people that are notaries. And we've had a couple of people that have departed that were notaries or unavailable to us. And so, we've actually been running short on notaries. But Jen Clark, someone that we hired in the community development department, just went and got her notary. So, we now have notaries. We have notaries, obviously, in the town clerk's office. But we have now another one in the building. On Department of Transportation, we had put in a request. The board had signed and voted for doing an extension of the acceleration lane at Exit 10 and Exit 11. Exit 11, they have not yet fully designed. So, they kinda said in the recent letter that they would look more seriously at 11 because they haven't looked at it. 10, they're in the process of doing survey work, and they are giving some consideration. I think talking about accidents and dangerous situations. I think it's about 175 feet in which, when you get off an Exit 10 to head west on the midcape, you're trying to accelerate, and about 175 feet, you can get about 22 miles an hour. And that, again, when you co-mingle 22 miles an hour with people going 50, is again, not something good. So, we have put in a request. I guess the good news is they didn't outright say no. They said they would look at it. But they certainly weren't thrilled about looking at it. I'll put it that way. Actually, today, I had an opportunity this morning, actually with the chairman and Charlene. We did look at the fire situation that existed up in the Hox Nest area. I think the fire department did an outstanding job, and the folks from the state came out to facilitate that. In the afternoon, I went over to the Lothravav tank and saw that. I was shocked at how quickly that has gone up. So, they had a little hole in which you had to crawl through to get in to see the inside. So, I went in to see really kind of an engineering marvel. No water yet, but kind of interesting, and it's a good project. That's something that the town, at town meeting, had appropriated $2.2 million. And, you know, I think the really nice thing about that, the project's on time, on budget, and it's just going very smooth. So, the tank is gonna be, I think, ready for water around Labor Day. And then they need to have the pump station, actually, to pump the water in and out of it. So, the pump station will be installed shortly after. I did also wanna just comment on... I referenced Carol Genotasio was a person that worked in our community development department, and she did tend to her resignation. She's retiring. So, we have a change that we will be looking at to see if there's any additional changes that we wanna make up on the second floor. But certainly, thank Carol for all of her hard work and dedication. And then I know I've had a few inquiries about what's going on with the West Harwich Plume. As you can tell by this agenda, we've focused a lot of time and attention on a lot of different topics. We do tend to... I'm gonna focus next on getting a response on the West Harwich Plume. I do have a contact that I'm gonna reach out to at DEP to see if DEP will come in and do a presentation from their perspective. And then Paula owes the board a summary. I know she's been diligent. She got about 1,000 pages worth of material that she's trying to digest and report back. So, I will follow up with her and get some kinda timeline.
We're meeting Wednesday morning.
Oh, we're meeting Wednesday. So, we'll get an update on Wednesday morning. And that concludes the comments that I have this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chris. Any comments from the board? Selectment report?
Nothing.
Nothing?
I spent about an hour in the dunk tanks the other night. I had a stroll.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Yeah, it ruined it. Was it warm?
Yeah, it was pretty warm.
Good.
Janelle?
I don't have anything.
Peter?
A couple of things. One is I just pulled up the Draver website for the solar, the landfill. Looks like so far this year, we've generated over... Wow, it's 4.1 megawatt hours. Or 4.1... Excuse me, 4,100 megawatt hours. It's pretty good. I don't remember what we were guessing we're gonna get in a year, but I think we're well ahead of schedule, quite frankly, which is encouraging. So, one thing, we voted a while ago to implement an accident register. Are we getting towards that, or another topic, another meeting or something?
Last, we did discuss that. That was going to be Charlene. That was one of our missed meetings, but I think we assigned that to Charlene. So, I think work in progress.
Don't assign things to me when I'm not here.
That's the best way to do it.
Work in progress.
Okay. All right.
Maybe we'll bring that to the next meeting.
And then last time I went to the website... Last time I went to the website, I didn't see the committee handbook there. Were we... Did we intend to do that, put that on the website? Committee handbook? Is it on?
No, I'll check. I thought the intent was to have it.
And to produce some flash drives and some hard copies as well.